Good evening. I'd like to thank everyone for joining tonight's virtual public hearing on the MBTA's draft fare evasion regulations. My name is Lindsay Heffernan, and I am the Acting Assistant General Manager for Policy at the MBTA. I'd like to inform everyone that this meeting is being audio and visually recorded and will be made publicly available after the meeting. But before we get started, I'd like to go over a few of the meeting controls for folks who might not be familiar with Zoom. First, we will have live Spanish language interpretation at today's meeting. I'll explain how to select your preferred language now in English. Written instructions are also provided on your screen now in Spanish. In your meeting webinar controls at the bottom of the screen, please click the interpretation button. Then click the language that you would like to hear. Even participants listening in English should select English so they can hear any comments being spoken in other languages through the interpreters. This this meeting will also includes ASL interpreters. We are joined tonight by Sharon Mendez and Linda Gregorio. The meeting host will spotlight the interpreters to ensure that they can be seen at all times. The ASL interpreters expect to switch roles approximately every 15 minutes. If at any point you cannot see the interpreter, please let the tech support know using the chat. We also have closed captions for this meeting. If you cannot see the captions, please press the closed caption button at the bottom of your screen to get them started. If at any point during this evening's meeting, you have technical questions about Zoom or the accessibility features of this meeting, please chat tech support through the chat feature. Today's date is April 15th, 2021, and we are on the record. I can confirm that we are being recorded at this time to hold a public hearing pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 2, on the MBTA's Proposed Regulations, 703 CMR 5.00 Fair Evasion. This meeting will make a presentation on the proposed regulatory changes and then offer an opportunity for public comment on the record. The MBTA is also accepting written comments until 5:00 PM on April 30th. Written comments may be submitted by email to fairregulations@mbta.com. The email address should be on your screen now. Also, I would like to make those those who are interested in this topic may also be interested in two public meetings that we are holding next week and the week after on April 20th and April 29th about our future proof of payment system, which would be going live in calendar year 2023. Sorry, I'm doing a little support and this tonight, so bear with me. On the line tonight, we have a few colleagues with me, and I'd like to ask them to turn on their cameras and just introduce themselves. Let me start with Anthony Thomas. Anthony, please introduce yourself, sir.
Hello, my name is Anthony Thomas. I'm the Manager of Policy Development and Outreach for the MBTA. Thank you.
And Rachel.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Morrison. I'm Assistant General Counsel for the MBTA.
And lastly, Andy.
Hello, good evening. My name is Andy Stuntz. I'm the Senior Manager of Fair Policy Analysis for the MBTA.
I want to thank them all for taking the time to be with us this evening and also thank all of our interpreters for joining us. Okay, so I'd like to cover our agenda for tonight. Our background of sort of what are we trying to achieve through these regulations? I'll then walk through what our proposed regulations say, and then we'll have an opportunity for any of you to provide us some feedback. So as a background, one of the major reasons that we are going through fare transformation or modernizing our fare system is to allow for all door boarding and ultimately a faster and more reliable service. In the current system, you have to have a Charlie card. You can't pay while you're waiting for the bus. Many people pay and reload as they board at the fare box, which leads to longer lines, more times at the stops. It really changes the length of overall all of our trips or trip variability, and it doesn't provide as great of a customer experience for all of our riders. In the future, our intention is that everyone will have fare fare media available to them. That could be through credit cards, through phones, but there would be many more places off of our vehicles in which you can add cash or other value to your Charlie card account, and that we would have readers on all the doors of the particularly the buses, the green lines and the Matapan Trolley to make it easier for people to load at all of the doors. We know that opening all of the doors will allow for shorter lines, quicker stops, potentially savings of as great as 10% and faster trip time, and also an improved customer experience. So we want some of the things that we are doing is currently we're installing readers on all of the doors on the buses and Green Line. We're developing fare rules around fare media to allow for expanded access across the transit network. And I would encourage you on our website, we'll be hosting some public meetings about our future fare rules in the month of May. We'll be implementing a proof of payment system in the future to encourage and ensure fair compliance. But we'll have civilians fare verification team to be assisting our MBTA staff in ensuring that people pay their fares. And then also, in order to make it more convenient for customers to add cash or reload value to their Charlie card, we're implementing a pretty extensive sales network in the community. We've already hosted some public meetings about that. There's a lot of information on our website, and I would encourage folks to check that out. What we do know, though, is that estimated revenue loss in our current system that we estimate on, then we have these estimates that come both from the our internal estimates, and these are numbers that have shared. We've shared in the past with the our our board, our Financial Management and Control Board over the past years, that we estimate fare evasion rates of roughly 5 to 10% currently on the Green Line, about 1% on other rapid transit, and about another 1% on bus, with a total loss between $5 and $6 million per year on those modes. We also have estimates that on the commuter rail, the fare evasion rates could lead to revenue loss between an order of $10 to $20 million. So fare evasion is certainly a big problem for us. When we think about a future with all door boarding, which is really the downside risk of our of our future fare transformation system, we know that fare evasion has the potential to go up and go up potentially quite dramatically. Thinking only about all door boarding, so not commuter rail, but our Green Line, bus, and Matapan Trolley, without fare verification, we expect that evasion rates could be at at least 13% and potentially could be much higher, and that the increase in fare loss could be as high as $25 to $30 million over today's fare evasion rates. We know that in other communities, when there's been a breakdown in norms around the payment of fare evasion, and there's some published published work from Santiago to Chile, you've seen evasion rates as high as 28%. So that is the risk that we are trying to mitigate through the development of our regulatory scheme that we're going to share with you this evening. When we think about why we're moving to a verification system, the biggest return on fare verification is deterrence. The goal is not to recover all of our lost lost fares through fine revenue, not at all. But we know that when people see other other individuals being inspected and when they are inspected themselves periodically on the system, that it increases their willingness to voluntarily pay pay their fare. This is a quote from one of those studies I cited, and it said, and it's opening, "The fare evasion siphons revenue and generates a sense of unfairness amongst passengers and leads to questions of accountability when agencies express their need for more funding to maintain or expand services." So we know fare evasion is a is a problem both in in the public domain, but also on the books for the for the MBTA. Prior to the 2021 Transportation Bond Bill, which passed this past January, the transit police were the only classification of employees who could issue fare evasion citation. In 2017, there were approximately 2,500 fare evasion citations issued. That was down from about 3,200 in 2016. And to understand more about how those fare evasion tickets were issued, the MBTA did a hand review of all of the citations issued in the month of January of 2019, shortly before the pandemic. There were a total of 150 citations issued at that time, and then we've offered below the both the race and the gender, race ethnicity and gender that is perceived, race and ethnicity on the citations, and then the the gender of those who were receiving citations. When we think about the one of the the MBTA was a strong proponent to decriminalize fare evasion and to see changes in overall how fare evasion was was happening on the tier, fare evasion inspection was happening on the T. Most of that work was founded ultimately in the Transportation Bond Bill adopted in January. What that bill did is decriminalize fare evasion, as I've said, and provided the ability for the MBTA to designate who can issue fare evasion citations. So you will see some of that language in our regulations, meaning that it does not just transit police who can issue citations, that we could say that commuter rail conductors could issue citations, for instance, when currently they don't have that ability. It also provided the MBTA with a regular authority regulatory authority to both set fine levels and appeal processes. And it established that we must submit a monthly annual report on both warnings and citations through our Office of Performance Management and Innovation, known as OPMI. So those are exciting changes for us that we're quite happy about and what really got us here to this evening. The prior status of fare evasion citations on the T up through January of this year, for a first offense, it was a $100 citation, a second offense was 200, and third and subsequent offenses were $600. One unpaid citation was reportable to the Registry of Motor Vehicles to mark the offender's license for nonrenewal. What we are now proposing is to both lower our fines and then be coming back as we launch the future pair pay fare payment verification system in approximately 2023. What we are hoping to do is to deliver the benefits ultimately of all door boarding and faster and more reliable service. In the meantime, that is for the next approximately two calendar years, we're proposing that we decrease our fine levels now, knowing that we will have a launch of the fare payment verification system and all of fare transformation, which will give a lot more flexibility in how we think about future interactions between riders and our civilian fare verification team. We do expect that in sometime in calendar year 2023, that we will need to update our regulations accordingly. So what we're proposing for this evening is essentially our placeholder or phase one regulations to hold us through to 2023, when we would be doing this process again, going through a public hearing process and updating our regulations. So I'd like to cover some of the key elements of what's in our proposed regulations, and then we'll have an opportunity to hear from all of you. Just to make sure everyone understands the regulatory process, we have filed draft regulations with the Secretary of State's office. We are currently accepting public comments. This is one opportunity this evening and hosting a public hearing, but comments, as I said, can be accepted in in writing as well. Then the staff will be after we close the public comments on April 30th. We will be presenting our final draft regulations to our Financial Management and Control Board on May 10th for their consideration and approval. Once they are approved by our board, those final regulations will then be filed again, the final version with the Secretary of State's office, and will take effect after the publication in the Massachusetts Register. At that point in time, they have the effect of law. Some definitions in in the regulations. Certainly, when we when we use the word authority or MBTA, that refers to the MBTA. Fare evasion itself is defined as failure or refusal to pay or prepay required fare or the improper use of a reduced fare card on any vehicle or ferry owned or operated by the MBTA. A fare inspector is any person designated by the MBTA to verify that a passenger has paid their required fare or to issue a noncriminal citation for failure to pay that fare. A fine under the statute is any amount between $10 and $250 assessed to a person for fare evasion. A hearings officer is any person or persons designated by the MBTA to hear appeals for noncriminal citations. Noncriminal citations, again, decriminalizing was a main goal here, means a citation issued to a person who evades the payment of fare on again, any any vehicle or ferry. And whenever we've heard of, we've referred to the registry, we're talking about the Registry of Motor Vehicles. So in terms of what's in the stat in the regulations, the what are the grounds for a noncriminal citation? If a fare inspector or transit police officer sees someone evading payment of a required fare or fraudulently misusing a reduced fare card, or if upon request, any person fails or refuses to provide proof of having paid or prepaid their required fare for any vehicle or ferry owned or operated by the MBTA, an inspector or officer may issue such a person a noncriminal citation. The MBTA is proposing to cut our citation levels by more than half. We are proposing that for a first, second, or third offense, the citation amount be $50. If there is a fourth or subsequent offense, that that amount would raise to $100. A separate category of fraudulently misusing a reduced fare credential, that is a separate citation, we are proposing that that be a $70 citation. And that new category would be when somebody uses somebody else's reduced fare card in order to avoid paying the full fare. So somebody using a senior card who is not in fact a senior, someone taking someone's student card and using it when they are not in fact a student. We did look at fare evasion citation amounts at various peer agencies, and some of these are in front of you now. So for our partners and colleagues out in Seattle at King County, their citation amounts are $50. Bart is 70, 75 in LA. New York has 100. San Francisco is 120. TriMet in Portland has a more complicated scheme where it goes up by 20 and then $50 with each with each offense. We also looked at parking citation amounts in jurisdictions local to Boston. So before you, you can see the parking citation amounts in Boston, Brookline, Cambridge, Chelsea, Quincy, Somerville, and even MBTA's own parking. And those amounts range from $15 to $200 based on the different municipalities that are served by the MBTA. In the regulations, appeals are also described, I should say the regulations themselves also on our website, and they are posted. So if someone wants to read all of the text, they're certainly there and available. And I can see somebody just posted it in the chat. Thank you, Anthony. So you can see all of the language if you would like to there. That within 30 days, someone, a person who receives a citation has a couple of options. They can pay the fine as indicated. They may request an appeal of the fine by either requesting a hearing or submitting for a written appeal. By requesting a hearing, the regulations delineate that that hearing can be in person or virtual. The hearing itself is informal, meaning there are no rules of evidence or complicated sort of court-like procedures. The decision of the hearing officer is final, but it is subject to judicial review, the same as a parking ticket is is today. You could always bring it to court if you wanted to contest it. If someone fails to appear at a hearing that they set, that itself can result in denial of that appeal. You may also submit an appeal by mail or electronic means. That doesn't prohibit your right from having a requesting a hearing in person. We have 60 days to respond, and and that we must notify the individual in writing. And if an appeal is denied, we also have to provide a written explanation for why the denial happened. We've offered, we have proposed 30 days in which to take any one of those actions. Again, we looked at some of our peer agencies, and they range in terms of the number of days for an appeal between 21 and 45 days. So we're relatively in in the median there. If an individual fails to pay or to appeal by the 30th day, the MBTA will issue written notice to the person, we will send, we'll send a piece of mail to their home. It will also include on that notice, the person's right a notice that their right to op motor vehicle may not be renewed. And upon two or more unpaid or unresolved citations, the MBTA may notify the the registry, and the registry will then be able to place a hold on a person's license for renewal. To remove the hold, a person must either pay the fine. They may request a waiver for financial hardship reasons in order to that for that fine to be listed lifted. In addition, in the regulations, we reiterate that our requirement that we submit a annual report documenting the prior 12 12 months of warning and citations. And the MBTA is provide is required to provide and develop some written criteria for what will be contained in the content of that of that report, really for the purposes of transparency to the public. At this point in time, I'd like to open our open things up to any right, any feedback that we might have. We are looking to hear back from you if our proposed regulations make sense, if there are alternatives that we should be considering, if our appeal window is is long enough to accommodate riders. So let me cover a couple of ways that you can provide comments this evening. Comments can be submitted via the chat pod, and we will then read those as part part of the record. To make a comment aloud, you must virtually raise your hand. And so to do this on a computer, you can press Alt Y, or you can click the reactions button at the bottom of your screen and select raised hand. On a mobile device, you're going to tap the raise hand button at the bottom center of your screen. And on the phone, you're going to dial star nine. Once you raise your hand, you'll be added to the queue with others who have raised their hands. And I'll call on folks on a first come, first served basis. When it's your turn to speak, I'll say your last name or the last four digits of your phone number, if we have any phoning callers, and I'll let you know that I'm unmuting you. If you're on a computer or a mobile device, a box will pop up in the center of your screen. You'll need to confirm that you want to be unmuted before you begin speaking. And if you're on a phone, an automated recording will let you know that you have been unmuted. You may speak as soon as that recording finishes. Once you're unmuted, I want to just remind everyone that everyone in the meeting can hear you. Before making your comment, please slowly state your name and any organizational affiliation. And please remember to speak slowly as we have multiple interpreters working with us this evening. And ask people to limit their comments to two minutes if and to make one comment. Certainly, we don't have a ton of people with us tonight. So if we have a chance for people to give multiple comments, we're happy to do that. And we encourage you to raise your hand again, and we'll make sure all of your comments can be can be heard this evening. So at this point in time, I see one one raised hand, and so I'm gonna unmute last name of Ruben. Great. Hear you. Thank you.
Excellent. Good evening. This is Stacy Rubin from Conservation Law Foundation, where I am a senior attorney. I just want to thank the MBTA staff, those on this call, and others from the team who are not here tonight for working with us and other advocates on the Transportation Bond Bill. That was enormously helpful. We are thrilled that we have decriminalized fare evasion for the T. We at CLF support fare evasion reform because fare evasion citations are disproportionately issued to low-income residents and people of color. According to data that we've received from the T in response to a public records request, the T has issued approximately 3,000 to 4,000 citations for fare evasion every year, with most of those citations at with fair gates. And just to give a little bit of a summary of that data, in January of 2019, the T issued 150 fare evasion citations, with the majority of those issued at four stations, Andrew, Downtown Crossing, Copley, and Park Street. And then of those 150 citations, 88% were issued to males, 12% to females, and 55% were issued to people of color. The new law approved the range of between $10 and $250. We support the $10 version of that range. We recommend that the first, second, and third offense be reduced from $50 down to $10. And we're hoping that in the second round of regulatory reform, that there be alternatives to fare evasion included. And because we will have a two-year period where that will not happen, we think this is a good reason to reduce the fare from $10 to 10. And further, we want to just point out that it should not be more expensive to drive, including the cost of parking, than to take the T. Right now, it looks like your regulations show that violations of parking are in the $10 to $15 range. If someone fails to pay their parking fee plus the cost of parking, a $50 evasion fee for not paying a $1.70 bus fare is unjust and not helpful. And finally, we look forward to working with you on pairing the fare evasion reform with a means-tested fare program. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come at night and for the great presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rubin. I appreciate your comments and also appreciate having worked with you on much of this. If I can unmute last name of Nichols, please.
Hello, my name is Olivia Nichols. I am a T rider and also an organizer with the Environmental Justice Organization, Green Roots. So I organize with folks and residents of Chelsea and East Boston. And I definitely want to echo the the comment that Stacy just offered. And yeah, that point on us also supporting fare evasion reform because fare evasion citations disproportionately impact low-income residents and people of color. And this isn't in any way to draw any form of correlation to folks who get citations and our communities. But this is just to say that that our communities and the folks that are riding public transit are many are low-income residents and people of color. And so this is, this is just very relevant to our folks. And specifically on some of these regulations, I did want to comment on the portion of the Transportation Bond Bill that includes the fare evasion fine range between $10 and $250. And definitely want to state that we support the lower end of this range. And I've seen that the proposed regulations, let's see, that the fare evasion fine for the first, second, and third offense is of $50. And we just want to very clearly state that we do recommend that amount be significantly lowered to not more than $10. And I think that goes back to our our point, I think it's pretty common sense that that rider who can't afford currently to pay the fare are unlikely to have the means to pay really absurdly high penalties with this topic of fare evasion. And then lastly, I just do want to state that we strongly believe that fare evasion reform must be paired with a means-tested fare program, and we see those as as very linked. So because public transit is serving our residents as as a lifeline to access economic opportunity and jobs, education, healthcare, and everyday necessities. And we know that even before COVID, many of our people were struggling to pay fares, and now with with so much unemployment in our communities, and we're facing this probably slow economic recovery, that we need to ensure that all people have access to affordable public transit. And so lastly, just want to state that we see that a low-income fare or free public transit would guarantee mobility is affordable to people struggling with unemployment and also paratransit services for people with disabilities must be easily accessible and affordable, even for people living outside. and affordable, even for people living outside of urban centers. So just wanted to tie the topic of tonight in with means tested fare programs as very central to this question of making sure that our folks can access affordable public transit. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. I'm glad to have you with us here this evening. At this point, I'm in time, I'm going to unmute the last name of Owen.
My name is Sophia Owen. I live in Jamaica Plain and I'm a T rider myself. I'm also the staff attorney and the director for environmental justice legal services at Alternatives for Community and Environment or ACE in Roxbury. ACE builds the power of communities of color and low income communities to eradicate environmental racism and classism, to create healthy and sustainable communities, and to create environmental justice. Like previous speakers, we welcome the decriminalization of fare evasion and are grateful that the T has taken this step. And we support further reform because this is an issue that disproportionately impacts our members, other residents in Roxbury and communities of color and low income communities served by the T. As you heard previously from Stacy Rubin, under the current structure, fare evasion citations are disproportionately issued to low income residents and people of color, particularly to metaplayers. We support fare evasion reform because these same riders who cannot afford to pay the fare are unlikely to have the means to pay such a high penalty. You may know Roxbury is majority non-white, 53% of Roxbury residents in 2015 were black and 29% were Latino. And the median household income in Roxbury at that time was $25,937, which is significantly lower than the Boston median income of $55,777. We're encouraged that the T is, is considering lowering the fines that are imposed for fare evasion, but it's unreasonable to expect riders who cannot afford to pay a $1.70 bus fare or a $2.40 subway fare to pay a fine that's potentially equal to 100 times of the unpaid fare. And we request that the fine imposed, regardless of the offense for second, third, et cetera, be greater than $10. We also recommend that the T promulgate regulations that focus on alternatives to paying fares and that prevent referrals to the RMB. We would support alternatives to resolve fines other than payment in full, as is the front practice in King County. Are opposed to preventing driver's license renewal until fare evasion penalties are paid. Because doing so, if we, if we're, if we're preventing people from accessing the T because of their income, we shouldn't also be preventing them from driving to be able to reach their, their jobs and other places that they need to go. And lastly, like previous speakers, I would request that fare, fare decriminalization reform be paired with the creation of a means tested fare. As we all know, before COVID, many people were struggling to pay fares. And at this point, it is even harder to do so. And a low income fare or a free public transit would make sure that mobility is affordable to all people, regardless of their income. We'd also request that paratransit services for folks with disabilities be easily accessible and affordable, even for people outside of urban centers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and we look forward to working with you on this.
Thank you very much for your comment. I do appreciate it. I'm now going to unmute last name of Grasso. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. You should be able to unmute now. Last name of Grasso, I see your hand raised. I'm trying to unmute you. Bear with me just a moment. You should be able to click a button on the center of your screen.
Okay, okay.
There we go.
Yeah, what happened? You kept muting me, but that's okay.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. That's all right. Do you need to see me?
Nope, nope, not at all.
I have trouble, I have trouble with that sometimes.
Not at all. You could just say your name. That would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Fred Grasso. I'm wondering, it just came to mind now when I saw those three or four women that seemed to be somewhat coordinated, maybe not. But what happens if four people like that come into your, and went to the stops and refuse to cooperate with the fare inspector? Is that going to create a dangerous environment?
Thank you, Mr. Grasso, for, for your comment.
Sorry to do that, but I just.
No, it's quite, quite, quite a bright, and in the short term, while we do not have civilian inspectors on staff and do not expect them until calendar year 2023, the transit police will still be our predominant enforcement mechanism. We can have other staff do that, but they would be our, our stopgap, I would say, for the next year and a half, until we're able to transition. In the future, Mr. Grasso, I would love it if you could come to our public meeting a week, a week from tonight, I think, on the 20th, where we're going to talk more about what that future system is going to look like. So our civilian inspectors will be paired together in teams of two so that they're never alone, so we can think about the safety of our, the MBTA staff, as long as obviously the equity issues for our riders and wanting to ensure that we have a system that is unbiased. So while slightly less relevant for our regulations tonight, I really appreciate where the question is coming from. And I, I hope that is, I hope that is helpful of our, our plans for the moment. Did that answer your question?
I hope this works.
Thank you very much. Thanks. I'm going to have another comment, it looks like, a raised hand from last name Gilbert.
Hi, this is Tom Gilbert from Somerville. I, I, I wanted to elaborate on what Mr. Grasso was saying. I, I understand that at the last meeting that Anthony Thomas was at, that the fare evasion would be something more between administration and the actual passengers, as opposed to like putting like what Mr. Grasso was just saying, putting fare inspectors and bus drivers in danger. Like, let's say that scenario of people literally didn't want to pay the fare. Let's say one decides to punch the, the fare inspector in the face, let's say, the same kind of punishment that the driver would get in the past, it's happened in the past. And I just hope that, I just hope, like you were saying, I, I, I hope this works. And I hope this, this leads to, to, to a better system. And, and finally, I also like to say that in the past, I think having the fare boxes with the, with, with the little Coke machines fare slot was a big, big mistake. Because not only people that are loading cards on the, on the, on the fare boxes, but also are paying like dimes, like nickels. Get people waiting in a line in really cold or really hot weather, trying to, waiting to get on the bus. It's been, it's been a real, you know, it's, that's really slowed down things too. And I just hope that this system is a lot more logical and and also wanted to say that in Kings County, they, they, they also record audio there too. So if the T buses could record audio and the video cameras, they could do a better investigation of what was actually said to the driver, what the driver said to the passenger, just for those moments to record the audio. And I'd like if they maybe, if they could maybe modify the audio recording law in Massachusetts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gilbert. There's a lot in there, but I have, I have documented it all. Certainly in, in the future, once we do have those civilian inspectors, that will be the point in time where I can tell you that the dimes and nickels will not be, those fare boxes won't exist on, on the buses. And so that will be one, that, that will help one, one piece of what you said. But appreciate the recommendation to look to our partners in King County and learn more about what, what they are doing there in terms of, of audio. Obviously, the, ensuring the safety of our staff is important to all of us. Both currently, our operators are alone on their buses and we think about really letting them in the future state, their job is to drive that bus safely and, and not to be thinking about, about fare enforcement. And so that will be the responsibility of another class of employees. But thank you very much for all those comments. I've written them down and we have another person taking notes and I'm recording this, so we didn't miss any of it.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'm going to just remind people that if you want to make a comment, you can raise your hand or drop something into the chat. I'm just double checking. We don't have anything in the chat right now. I don't think we do.
Ms. Baxter has her hand up.
Oh, Ms. Baxter does. I'm sorry. Why do I not see her on my list? One moment, Ms. Baxter, and I will make sure we can get you unmuted. Why don't I see her? Mr. Wunsch, I see you. Give me a minute to just find Ms. Baxter and then I will be back to you. Ms. Baxter, I'm trying to unmute you now. You should have the ability to click unmute. There you go.
Yeah. Yeah. What gets me is when you talk about the, the black whites, you know, like, look at the high percentage. Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you. Just fine.
High percentage, the highest percentage of fare evasion was on the green line. But you seem to do more of the checking on the subways. You know, and the green line, I think, has a lot of students in that. And I consider it. And I'm standing for the means tested fare that we need. And about the giving it to the automobiles. The T, riding the T has nothing to do with your automobile or travel. And a lot of automobile citations because of safety measures. And that, I, I don't think it should have really anything. I don't have a car anywhere, so.
Yeah.
You know, that's the whole, but I am concerned about the areas where you choose to give a citation. And I think I took, with the T riding, we did see things, the instructions. And there is something in that the Ts don't try to, if somebody gets too, too aggressive with something, then they can decide what to do is let it go or and sometimes you might have to let it go. And I don't think it happens that often. But, you know, and I like it that you're getting more places where people concluded on. But I am concerned, why aren't you checking the green line more?
Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Baxter. I'll respond to a couple, a couple of those. Certainly, I, I hear you on, on the green line. I think one of the things that we're trying to do over the next year and a half, before we bring on all those civilians to start doing inspection, is to ensure that we have an equitable routing system. I'm in heated agreement with you that solely checking at, at the gated stations is not an equitable solution. And so we need to be doing a better job covering all of our, all of our network and not just the busiest routes, all of the routes. And make sure that we don't, don't assume that fare evasion only happens in stops or certain stations or certain lines. So we are in the process of trying to think about this. This, this, this set of regulations is a step getting us closer to that, to that ultimate day. But I, I am with you and I also log in your comment about our connections around, around the automobiles and, and the registry. So thank you very much for those. I appreciate them. I think I have another hand raised. It looks like last name Wunsch. You should be able to unmute now.
How is my audio working for everybody?
Yeah, I can hear you just fine.
Okay, excellent. Two quick questions. I don't know if I can answer either one. It may just be something to go on record as something to get back to me later about. The first is about the, the scope, because I noticed in the, the definition of the failure, failure to pay on any vehicle or ferry owned or operated, owned by or operated for the MBTA. I'm wondering if RTAs, the regional transit authorities, fall in any way under the scope of this proposed legislation? I'm not sure if RTAs are completely outside the scope of operated for the MBTA?
Yes, thank you for asking that. And this, this legislation is very clearly an MBTA specific. Our RTA partners are governed and have a different oversight. And so in fact, there, I'm not sure, I really don't know a lot about their, their ability to issue citations. But this would apply only to the MBTA service network itself.
Okay, very good. And then the, the second thing is slightly more, more minor. Is the, I, I've read it again and again, and I can't seem to find the language. If someone is going to be cited for non-payment of fare, but refuses to present an identification, does that then become a criminal offense?
No, if, you might be looking at what is currently still on the state website. So the state website, they have not updated it since the transportation bond bill. I noticed this the other day.
I pulled down the proposal.
Yeah, okay. And so, no, if you are not, if you do not have a license, that is not a criminal offense. You don't have to carry a license to ride the MBTA. And so while one of our staff may ask for a license to make it easier to issue the citation and avoid you having to say your name, your home address, and say all that on a busy crowded bus. We'll ask you for your license. It'll make it easier for us in the future to just scan that. And then we know your information and can give you your ticket and move on and make this as, as painless a, a process and interaction. If you don't have a license, then we will just ask you to, to identify yourself.
I'm sorry, take it one step further. What, what if someone refuses to provide any identification or even name and address? Does, does that then rise to?
I think, yep, in a, in a future state, then I think we're going to be talking about lots of work around training our staff and training our staff around the issues of de-escalation. It's certainly really important. You know, we are not trying to criminalize the unwillingness to get a ticket, right? And so we're, we're trying to avoid escalating that situation and not making an unsafe situation for everybody on a, on a bus and keep that bus moving. Our, we will have to do a lot of work and we're going to be actually asking people for more feedback on that in a, in a few days, next week, when we have more hearings. But around what sort of training we should do, how do we need to, how should we be approaching those situations? But long and the short of it is, if, if you tell me a, a different name or you refuse to give me a name, we are still going to try to do our best to issue that citation to you. Could you crumple it up and throw it on the floor and never do anything with it? Of course, right? There are people who never pay their tickets. But that, we think it is important that individuals who, who other people on the bus, let's say, stick with the bus, see that you didn't pay, we're asking you to, to, you know, we're trying to check that you have paid. If you're refusing to take the ticket, that we're issuing you the ticket and we're following our process. And we actually think that that deterrence factor outweighs the fact that you may never pay your ticket. And that, that the next time they, all of those riders get on the bus, they know, oh, they are serious. This is important and they're going to issue the ticket. But it, but that professionalism is going to be really paramount to making this successful.
Very well said. I forgot to identify myself, by the way. Stefan Wunsch. I'm the current co-chair, one of the two current co-chairs of the MBTA Rider Oversight Committee. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much for your comment and thanks for introducing yourself. I'm supposed to remember to ask you to do that. So thank you. Thank you for the support of the T. And at this point, I'm going to encourage, we don't have any, anyone else with their hands raised at this point in time. Do I have any other comments in the chat? It looks like Mr. Gilbert. I'm going to unmute you again, sir.
Hi, this is Tom again from Somerville and MBTA named Plantev and I tagged member wanted to say, I think I forgot to say that earlier.
Thank you.
I, I, these, these ideas sound generally good and everything and, you know, I like, you know, I like what I'm hearing. But I'm hoping that we can kind of like really get a good system of fare collection going. And once we, once we meet that goal, for other discussions, you know, I won't get into them now because it's not what we're talking about now. But for other type of things like, like complying with the safety rules on buses, not littering on buses, not defecating and you know how those things happen on some of the routes and I'm not going to mention them. But things, you know, quality of life type things that we can talk about in the future to, to start enforcing more on and start easing up on the fares, but getting more emphasized on bus safety and bus and train conduct, basically. I mean, what, how does that sound for future discussions and everything?
It sounds like you just opened up a whole new work stream, Mr. Gilbert. But I, but I very much appreciate the sincerity of where that, where that comes from. And we certainly want our riders to have, have a safe and enjoyable. And we want your ride to not be the thing about your day that you remember, right? That we get you where you need to go. And so some of the things you're mentioning are clearly important for us to be, be paying attention to. And so I will absolutely get those to the, to the proper departments as we think in the future about how we improve our, the totality of our system.
Right, like what's wrong with having, you know, a fair code of conduct? You know, because there's a saying they used to have on the bad buses and Brockton on the RTA there. We provide quality of service because drivers and passengers cooperate. And it's a very true saying, if everybody just comes to a common agreement on something and just cooperates, that provides better quality of service, better reliability, better, you know, when you get on the bus, you'll be safe. It'll be clean. It won't, it won't be, you know, me as a visual impaired person won't have me as a visual impaired person won't have to be worried about sitting in somebody's coffee cup with coffee and then you're ruining my good pants and everything. You know, things like that and everything, you know?
Certainly, certainly. Thank you very much. I will look at the bad riders' code of conduct. And happy to reach out to them and understand how, what, what that looks like. And if that, if that certainly helps improve the rider's experience. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert, for your, for your comment.
Thanks a lot.
Yep. And it looks like we have a comment in the chat and a question, bear with me just a moment, folks, is, oops, just will close the screen. Okay, what about people who don't have any ID or other than the card that they're paying with? So I think this is a question about in our future state, for riders who do not have an ID, inspectors would be asking them to verbally state their name and address in order to issue the citation. Again, you do not need to carry a license or a state document in order to ride the MBTA. Our rider demographic is diverse and we want it to stay that way. So we're certainly not looking to change that at all. And I do want to take a moment and respond to, I think, a comment that was made earlier about checking more on the, on the green line. Right now, and I want to thank you to the, to the team that's helping me out here, here today in the background. The correction to the numbers on fare evasion, we estimate that there is a five to 10% evasion rate for the green line when we have rear door boarding. And so not, not for all of the green, right now, rear door boarding is not the common way that people would, would board at the green line. The evasion rate at the front door where we find the fare box is much lower, closer to 1%. And so if I misspoke earlier and caused any confusion, I apologize for that. I'm just looking for more questions. And again, if you want to raise your hand, you're going to click under reactions and click the raised hand button. You can also send a comment to the moderator in the chat. It should be the default says tech support, I believe. And you can send any, any questions there. And I'm going to unmute last name Gilbert.
Okay, this is Tom again. I have a general question. Now, would the fare inspector be more concentrated at the rear door, figuring that the fare evasion would be higher at the rear door? Or like with a bus driver who watched the front and then the fare inspector would watch the rear? Is that how it would, how it would work?
Sure. Okay, so now we're talking about, just so everyone's clear, we're talking about calendar year 2023, not next year because we don't yet have all of the system in place. But once we have onboard validators where people can tap on to get on at either the door, the fare box won't exist anymore at the front, at the front of the, at the front of the bus. So bus operators are not involved anymore. You could imagine, we're still thinking about this and we're looking forward to some more public comments. So it's not totally outside of scope here. These are all kind of interconnected. They're just in phases. You could imagine a team of inspectors, one of the ideas that we're thinking about is that inspectors, each of them would get on one of the doors and then sort of move their way towards the center of the vehicle, inspecting everybody that they see. So there's no opportunity for selective enforcement or issues of bias, but everybody gets inspected. But also to avoid, if you have two inspectors get on the front and somebody has evaded their fare, they may hop off the back. And so the idea that we kind of cover, cover both, both doors, those are the ideas that we're thinking about. Again, that's still very much ideas and design at this point in time. And so we're open to feedback from the community about, about how to do that. But then they would be a team together. Should there be any issues, they obviously have a bit of a buddy system.
Anything else?
Did you have a follow-up question, Mr. Gilbert?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, I think I was still on. Yeah, I also wanted to comment too that, 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 I think you're all aware that persons with disabilities and visual impairments, that, that being able to board from the, from the front of the bus is very important and paramount because the driver can see where we're standing and everything. And you, and you know, and I know that not all the bus stops are not created equal. Some of them are very short, some of them are very long. There's no like set length of like sixty foot fireside, eighty foot near side, a hundred foot mid for the forty foot buses and then longer ones for the, for the bendy buses or the articulated buses. So I just wanted to emphasize that, that us being able to board through the front door is very important to us because, because especially when we're waiting at night where the driver can see us and when we, when we board. And then if the, if the, for the fare inspector actually have like a portable checker? So if I, if I swipe my blind access card, would he have like a portable device that would accept the ding and everything?
Yep, they would be, they and transit police, then you can imagine the future state conductors on the commuter rail would have a handheld device that they would, the same media that you tapped with. So if your blind access card, for instance, is what you would have otherwise tapped with at the fare box, it's how you tap to get on. Even when the, of course, the rider, the driver is helping you at the front of the bus. If an inspector gets on, they're going to have you tap whatever your fare media is. And that, that, that device is going to communicate with our back office system and say, this, this card is good to go. It is, this person is where they're supposed to be. They have, they have paid to be here. And that's happening in real time at close to lightning speeds and so that we can make sure and keep people moving, moving through, through the bus. So yeah, those handheld devices are really critical and got a lot of people working on the design of those right now to make sure that, that, that piece really works.
Yeah, because, because, because like I said before, that a lot of the bus stops themselves and not by fault of the MBTA, but, but the fault of the towns and cities are pretty lousy. I mean, some of them, I mean, my stop is only about forty feet long and near side is supposed to be eighty. And this is the one in Somerville. And every time I try to get it addressed, it's not the T that stonewalls me. It's the town and city that stonewalls me on it. And they haven't fixed it and everything, so.
Mr. Gilbert, can I send you an invite to come to our meeting next week where we're going to spend a lot of time talking about it? And I welcome you hearing from others and giving us more feedback on this because it's really, it's very important that we make sure both that individuals with disability have a good experience, but also that we be thinking about that, that future design. So more, more to come on that. And thank you again for all of your comments and for your, your, your support of, of the T and for encouraging us to continue to do better. This point in time, I am looking and I'm not seeing any other comments. So I'm going to encourage people, I do realize it's a little past seven, it's seven oh two. I thank you for the many of you who've stayed with us through this. I'm going to encourage folks to think about dropping a comment in the chat or raising your hand. And given that we're over the seven o'clock hour, what I'm going to propose is that I want to let you all know those meetings that we have on April twentieth and twenty ninth, the registration information can be found. The link on the website is to MBTA.com backslash fairs, backslash fare transformation, backslash get involved. You can find links to all of our upcoming meetings, including twentieth and twenty ninth about the future of proof of payment and fair verification. In May, we will be having meetings on our future fare rules. Once we have fare transformation in place, we will lot of more flexibility to think about our fares and our fare rules. And so we'll be seeking support and input from the riders and the public about what kind of fare rules should we be thinking about, things like transfer rules that maybe right now are more limited due to technology. So I encourage folks to join us at any of those. I am going to stay on the line along with a couple of members of my team in case anybody is wanting to wait till there's, there's fewer people on the line. But at this point, I'd like to thank you all for being here. If there's other things that you would like to cover, if it's important to you that we join a community meeting that you are having or there's ways for us to come, come to sort of where you are, so to speak, please do reach out to our public engagement team. It's publicengagement@mbta.com via email. Remember to ride safer. We look forward to serving you on the T. I want to thank you for, for being here tonight. And thank you, all of you who have provided, provided comment, comment to us. We do very, very much appreciate it and we'll be taking all of it into account. So thank you for being here, everybody, and have a, have a wonderful evening. And thank you to our interpreters for, for being here with us this evening and working. Have a good night, everybody.
Bye-bye from Mike.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, everybody. We're going to close down this meeting. Thank you, Linda. Thank you, Sharon. We'll see you again soon. Good night.